This is, it is November 3rd at approximately nine o'clock. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Our purpose in meeting today, other than any new business that the committee brings in front of us, is solely to get a report of the Superintendent Search Committee. We have with us Sean Costello, who is our representative from MASC, who has been retained to assist us in this process, as well as Jamie Wixton. Jamie, is this meeting being recorded by Zoom or are you doing your own efforts?
This meeting is being recorded by Zoom by Wareham Media at this time.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, I will return, turn it over to you.
Okay, so just an update on where we are at the moment. We had 20 applicants originally apply for the position of Superintendent. As a committee, we decided to interview six of those candidates. And we narrowed it down to three finalists, which we will bring to you today and that we will now then interview. And from that pool, hopefully find a superintendent that we choose on this Thursday night at our next school committee meeting. The three candidates, the three finalists that we are going to bring forward in no particular order are Eric Chaffee, who is an Assistant Superintendent for the Plymouth Public Schools, Amy Hartley-Matson from Randolph. She is currently their Assistant Superintendent. And Worley Williams, who is currently the principal at New Bedford Vocational High School, will be our three finalists. I don't, Joyce, if there's anything you want to add to that?
I would just, I would just say thank you to all who applied for the position. Thank you for the six candidates who came in to interview. And also thank you to the 13 members, the 12 other members of the committee who served. It was a great group. I really enjoyed working with all the different members from our different schools, from the town. And I'm really happy to be able to bring these three forward this morning so that now the rest of the committee this week will be able to meet them, interact with them. We'll move towards Thursday.
Thank you.
Just to, just to refresh everybody's memory, the process of going from 20 to six to three. My memory from three, four years ago is that it was, it was essentially numerical, meaning you took votes and people rated individuals. And to get into the top six required you to get a certain amount of support from, from the 13. And to get to the final three required a certain amount of support. It was not, in a sense, it was not a group consensus subjective process. It was, in fact, almost a numerical process based upon the votes of the 13 individuals. Is, is that a fair characterization?
I think overall it is. I mean, I think it is numerical. The magic number was always seven to make sure to get over half of the the votes on the committee along these different ways. But there was a lot of time for kind of some consensus building and some discussion, a lot of discussion about each of the candidates and the qualities always that we were looking for, especially about the vision for Wareham Public Schools. What qualities did we want to see in a superintendent? We discussed that a great deal. We looked at the survey that was given to the community. We looked at the qualities that that survey indicated was important to the townspeople and to staff members and to parents. And we, I guess we kind of calculated that or factored that into all of our ultimate numerical, if you want to call them votes or tallies that we took. So it was, I guess what I'm trying to say, it was a combination. But yes, ultimately it did come down to the kind of the calculation that we did with the ratings.
So the 20 became six because only six people got at least seven votes. Is that a fair statement? I'm, I'm not concerned about when, how long that process took. But in the end, the final, the semifinals of six was achieved because the, the other 14 people didn't get seven votes.
Correct.
Okay. And then from, to go from six to three was a similar process?
Yes. Yes, it was a similar process.
Okay. So in that sense, it was sort of a numerical consensus. And I don't discount the fact that was probably a lot of discussion, which is all good, which is why you were there.
It is all good. In every application, every candidate was considered. It was a very careful process. Careful and thoughtful process.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I jump in very quickly?
Not at all.
Great, thank you very much. So first, I just want to say to Kevin and Joyce that they did an excellent job leading this process with, with great support from Jamie. I'm sure you folks know how lucky you are to have Jamie in your district. But I, I want to just say that the 13 members of your search committee took great care to review every single aspect of every application that was received. And when Kevin and Joyce say there was discussion, there was quite a bit of discussion on every candidate when determining semifinalists. And then there was quite a robust conversation when determining finalists as well. MAS C provided a rubric that they could use to rate each answer to each question of each semifinalist on a scale of one to five. So just kind of going off your numerical question, there's, there was even more of a numerical aspect of it. And they, so they rated that, they gave everybody an overall score and then had a conversation on those scores, on the attributes they saw in every interview, and then determined with their votes who to move forward. We did take a couple of straw polls each time, so it wasn't just a discussion and then a final vote. There was a vote and then discussion on where we were at. And then another vote and a discussion on where we were at until you had three candidates receiving a majority vote.
So what's interesting to me, Sean, is I've been through this process, I think, I think this is my fourth time. And I am not displeased but surprised that none of the three finalists are existing superintendents. That's a first. How many of the 20 were existing superintendents?
That because of privacy issues and because of the executive session, I can't release that to you in a public meeting. But what I can tell you is that you have a very strong group of applicants that bring a whole lot of different attributes to the table. And your group of finalists is a strong group of finalists.
I'm not suggesting they're not.
I didn't think you were. I'm just letting you know that there's, this is not totally uncommon. You know, many districts will see that there's, there's quite a deep pool of talent in Massachusetts educational leadership circles. And, you know, you don't, you don't have a sitting superintendent or somebody with superintendent experience in this pool of three candidates that you have. And that just speaks to the great, great deep pool of talent that we have in Massachusetts.
Are you allowed to tell us how many of the 20 were from outside Massachusetts?
I cannot tell you that. I can't tell you that there were candidates from outside of Massachusetts.
Okay. I'm now turning it over to Roger and April, although I assume they're, I don't see them on the screen. But you're welcome to ask either Joyce or Kevin or Sean anything you like about the process or anything else to help you move forward. Jamie, is it?
I'm just listening. Put his microphone off, he's ready to go. Here comes Roger.
Is Jamie present?
I am, can you?
I'm sorry, is April present?
She is not, just Roger at this time, and his microphone is now active for you.
Thank you, Roger, go ahead.
I was just saying, I was just listening and I don't really have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So Kevin, would you like to discuss next steps?
So our next step is we have a very kind of a busy next three days. What's going to happen is that, I'm just looking at my dates here to make sure I have them correct. We're going to be doing site visits to each of these candidates' current places of employment. Tuesday, we're going to Randolph in the morning from 8:30 to 10. Wednesday, we're going to New Bedford Voke, same time, 8:30 to 10. And on Thursday, Plymouth, 8:30 to 10. And then we're also hosting site visits in Wareham. So on Tuesday, Worley Williams will be visiting Wareham from 10 until about 4:00 PM. Wednesday, Eric Chaffee from Plymouth will be coming from 10 to 4. And on Thursday, Amy Hartley-Matson will be coming from 10 to 4. So each candidate is going to meet with the superintendent and the town administrator from 10 to 11 o'clock on their, on their visit. And then Joyce and I, and anyone else is welcome to join us if they'd like, are going to take the candidates around to the different schools. We'll be visiting the high school, middle school, Wareham Elementary School. They're going to meet with the Wareham Middle School, all the administrative teams. There's going to be lunch in central office, where they'll meet the central office staff. And then in the afternoon, there will be a meet and greet in the Wareham Middle School Library from 2:45 to 3:45 for interested staff members, parents, or community members. So I'll stress that part again, from 2:45 to 3:45 on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in the Wareham Middle School Library, there will be an opportunity to meet each of the three finalists for the position of superintendent.
I'm sorry, Kevin. I was under the impression it was high school, middle school, high school were the locations. Has that been changed?
I'll step in, Kevin.
I'm sorry, did I miss up?
I'll just, I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll clarify. So on Tuesday with Worley Williams, they'll be at the high school library.
For the meet and greet?
Correct.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yep, Wednesday will be the middle school. And then Thursday, we'll be back at the high school. So we'll be, there's three different locations. And at the end of this meeting, I will be sending this back out to staff and community and press so that we have it all out for everyone, so they know exactly where they need to go.
So high school, middle school, high school, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Thank you, thanks Jeff, and thanks Jamie, of course. And then on Thursday, we are having the three finalist interviews at 4:15. We'll be interviewing Worley Williams at 5:45, Eric Chaffee in 7:15, Amy Hartley-Matson. And that is happening in the multi-service center in our regular school committee meeting room. And everyone, obviously, like any other school committee meeting, is invited to come and to listen to those interviews.
Sean, I, you were the individual who notified the three people, and I guess the three people who did not make it, that they, that they were now finalists. Can we assume that they were all enthusiastically ready to continue to, to participate in the process?
That would be a very safe assumption. They're all very excited for the opportunity to share their vision for Wareham Public Schools with you. Each one of them accepted their position as a finalist immediately. And have, I have to give them all credit. They have made themselves totally available this week throughout this entire process. I do want to say too, where we are scheduling kind of with a fast turnaround, site visits to their own districts. Each of their own districts has kind of bent over backwards to accommodate them as well and ensure that they're giving those of you who are visiting those districts a real, you know, comprehensive look into their leadership in those districts.
That's, that's great news because I remember just three or four years ago when a candidate actually backed out, when, when he became a finalist.
I don't believe you'll have that. I can't speak to that for certain, but I know that you do have three really enthusiastic finalists who are very excited for this opportunity.
I'd just like to note that at this time, April has joined the meeting. It's 9:16 AM.
Great. I'm glad you could join us, April. I apologize, I wouldn't risk summarizing everything that's been said. But you've been through this process before. Would you have any questions for Sean or Joyce or Kevin?
I submitted my questions. I apologize for submitting them. I hope Sean got them.
I did, April, yes.
Okay, fantastic. I just don't know, you know, like I said, I had, I apologize that I had a client. I was able to kind of maneuver the rest of my week so that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings, I should be able to go to all three site visits. I would just need to know obviously where they're going and I don't know who the candidates are. So that's my only question.
So let me review, April, just real quickly. So the three candidates are Worley Williams, who is the current principal at New Bedford Vocational Regional High School.
Okay.
Eric Chaffee, who is the current Assistant Principal for Plymouth Public School, Assistant Superintendent for the Plymouth School District. And Amy Hartley-Matson, who is currently the Assistant Superintendent for the Randolph School District.
Okay.
So you'll be getting all of the packets to, to review. We'll talk about that too today, the references and all of that and how we want to deal with the references. But for the visits, April on Tuesday, it's at Randolph from 8:30 till 10.
Okay, that's my, next to my hometown, so I'm very familiar.
All right, on Wednesday, it's New Bedford Voke.
Okay.
And Thursday, it's Plymouth.
Okay, so at least those are nice and close, so that's good.
Right.
Yeah, and I actually know people in Randolph Public Schools. So that would be, you know, as a, you know, staff members, I am familiar with some that work through the district. So that, that's, you know, encouraging that I can maybe get some insight from whoever we don't interview, however those interviews are set up. So that would be nice.
Correct, good.
Okay, I mean, those are the only questions that I would, would have had at the moment. Once I review, obviously, all of their, their packets and their resume and all that stuff, then that would, obviously, any other questions would come up from that.
Okay. All right, Jeff, we'll turn it back to you.
So you're all set. You referenced that you had some other things you wanted to talk about.
Well, I just, like in the past, the last time we talked, we kind of, I think, divvied up references, if I'm not mistaken. Do you remember doing that?
Yes, we did.
I'm more than willing to call all of them, I don't care.
No, no, no. No, you're 100% correct. We, we did divvy them up. And I think, let me delegate that role to you and, and we will simply accept your decision as to who we should call.
Okay. So who wants to call? I guess, I guess who's available to make calls and who would like to call?
When are we doing the call? I mean, like I said, I arranged so that my next couple of mornings are, and actually tomorrow completely. I have, you know, no clients tomorrow, Wednesday, so I can make calls as needed those days if, if need be.
Kevin, are you suggesting that, that one, one member of the school committee take all the references for, for, for one candidate? Is that what you're saying?
I think, is that what we did last time? That's what I'm trying to remember. And I've asked Sean, like what he might recommend for that as well.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I don't actually recommend that, number one, because I'd like to get different opinions on the same, on the same candidate's references. How many total references do we have to call?
You don't have to call any, but they've listed three. I can certainly, if you feel that three is not enough, Mr. Chair, I can certainly ask each of the finalists to provide a couple more.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting that. So there's a, there's a total of nine calls to be made. It does, it does seem to me that, that it might be beneficial for Roger, April, and myself to make those calls because we are the least familiar with the candidates for obvious reasons. So Kevin, if you want to divvy those nine calls up, but my only request is that I don't want one person making all three calls for the same candidate.
Right.
Well, if there's nine, why don't we do, if there's three of us are making the calls, why don't we each do one reference per candidate? Then that divvies up to nine, 333, and it's one reference per candidate. That way we kind of get a more well-rounded idea.
I completely agree, April.
Right, so what I would suggest then is Jeff, you do the, you'll see on the application, they're listed, there's one at the top, one in the middle, one on the bottom. Jeff, you do the first one. April, you do the second one. And Roger, you do the third one.
Fine.
Okay. Okay, so the top listed one, the first one listed will be Jeff, second one will be April, third one will be Roger, and you're each calling one from each of the three candidates.
And Sean, are there, are there things that we should or should not be asking when checking these references? I know that like when you're doing like an employment check from an HR perspective, that there are some questions that you can and can't ask or that are not applicable to an interview process. I know that this process is slightly different than the average job interview as it is public. So I wasn't sure if you had any insight or reference or recommendations on what we should and should not be asking these references.
That's a good question, April. And I will say that you should, you should review that document that I sent to Joyce and that she disseminated to everybody for what you can and cannot ask candidates themselves. When it comes to references, you certainly can't ask for the information that you see listed there. There's obviously sensitive personal information you can't ask for. Everything that you see listed on that document, you can't ask the, the references to speculate on anything like that. I would keep it, you know, I, I would keep away from anything controversial like that or anything that you feel might be controversial when speaking to these references. But you do want to ascertain their professional experience. You want to confirm that. You want to confirm the relationship with the references. And you want to hear from the references why they believe this person is ready to be the educational leader in Wareham, I think is, is the ultimate thing. You know, when you call these references, you don't want to keep them on the phone for an hour. But you do want to make sure that you're asking more questions other than just, you know, hey, did you work with so-and-so at this district and what'd you think of them? You know, you want to be asking Wareham. So maybe what you do is you ascertain, you know, being school committee members who know your district better than I do. You know, you'd say, for example, look, Wareham is dealing with an issue where students are continuing to leave after eighth grade and go to a few different opportunities around the region. What do you think this person's capability is in addressing that? And how, how have you seen them address similar issues? Or, you know, how is this person's communication style? How does this person work when they've got a million different balls in the air at, at the same time? And, you know, how does this person deal with communicating with their team? How do they make decisions? Just, just things that go beyond the whole, what do you think of them?
So just to be, just, just to be, get to, to the, to our core issue. I think we're probably all familiar with the embarrassment out West where ICE showed up for the superintendent who turned out to not be a legal resident of the United States. How much, how much reference checking scrutiny, et cetera, has already been given these three individuals?
So with something like that, it's a little different in Massachusetts because when you're employed in a district, there's certain things that you have to go through, including fingerprinting that proves that you are in fact a legal resident, legally, you know, legally able to work. So that's already been done through their districts. We can confirm that at MAS C. Now that these finalists are public, we can start to, to just confirm that. But these are also people that we've seen, you know, in leadership roles in other districts. So that's, that's certainly not something that I foresee being an issue. But we do do, you know, we, we reach out to districts as well just to ensure that this person is legally employed. That is not a problem with any of these three people.
And all of them are, are eligible to be a superintendent of a Massachusetts school district?
Correct. Each one of them has their licensure for that, yes. That is something that MAS C has cross-referenced.
Good.
Okay, great. I unfortunately have to hop off. My next client has just walked in. But I will look to the email or, all the information in the packets been emailed or is being emailed.
April, I'm sorry, when you have a moment, would you just be able to give me a call today?
Yeah, I can give you a call this afternoon. Your, your number's in my, in that email, right?
Yes, yep. And if not, it's on the MAS C website.
Perfect, Sean, I will give you a call later. Thank you guys, and I will touch base later.
To you in Randolph.
Thanks.
All right, bye.
By the way, just in, because I'd forgotten to this point to say this. I think the search committee, who I know you guys have already thanked, but Joyce and Kevin deserve our thanks for all the hours that they put in already in this process. Joyce, I know Kevin is the chair, but did you have anything else that you wanted to say regarding this process and next steps?
No, Kevin did a good job of outlining the next steps. I thanked the committee. I, it was genuinely, you know, a pleasure to work with that committee. I think everyone was very committed to the process. So just thank you to them.
Great, thank you again. All right. Kevin, anything else?
I would just specifically also want to thank Emily Brundage, who was a student on our committee, who really, I think, represented the students well and was not afraid to go get in the back and forth with some of the candidates in a very positive way. But she was a good addition to, to the committee.
Yes, from my brief experience with her at, at a school committee meeting, I'm not surprised to hear that, but that's great.
She was fantastic. I have to say, I've seen students participate in this process in other districts and, and she was really exceptional.
Yes, well, we have a lot of exceptional Wareham students.
I believe that, yeah. If she's any representation of that, I believe it. And she sold your district well to these candidates.
And, and we want a superintendent that is going to sell those students as well to our community.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I just have a quick moment to discuss the, the questions?
Oh, absolutely, go for it.
Awesome, I appreciate it. So first of all, I appreciate all of you for sending some suggested questions to me. There are certain things that a couple of folks submitted that may not be able to be legally asked the way they were submitted. So I'm working to just work around that a little bit. I've, I've reached out to MAS C's legal counsel just to make sure that we're on the right track with all of those. I have currently for you 15 questions. As each one of you submitted, three or four. I'm happy to send those to any of you at any time. I do want to speak with April today on the phone, just full disclosure, because I'd like to get clarification on one of the questions that she would like to ask. But obviously, at the end of the day, these are just suggestions. You are all duly elected members of your school committee and can ask whatever question you please during the interview. And you can ask it in any wording that you'd like to ask it in. But I will say that I've tried to change it just a little bit, looking at a lens of can this question be asked? And, and how would it impact the flow of the interview if it was asked in the way that it was submitted? So I'm going to be sending you suggested questions. And again, I'm saying suggested because that is something that is totally within your purview as school committee members to, to impact. The other thing that I will say to you is that I do have a press release prepared for you to send out today. I'd just like to talk with Jamie, if I could, very quickly after this meeting, to make sure that the details are attached. That includes the resumes of each candidate, but there are certain things in resumes, I just have to review those with Jamie to make sure that there are certain details that are redacted from, from those resumes. But everything is ready to go with that as well. So once this meeting ends, Mr. Chair, you are, as a district, more than welcome to disseminate the information. Your candidates have been made aware that this is the morning, that it would become public, so they could make sure their families know as well as their supervisors and anybody else that they feel is on a need-to-know basis before it gets announced. But now those candidates should have a plan to, to notify their staffs that they are a finalist in this, in this search process and could very well be leaving.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
Does anybody, including Sean, frankly, I want to include Jamie because she has been so critical to the logistical process. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say regarding the search process?
No.
Roger?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, this, because this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee, is there any other business that people would like to bring before the committee? I will say, for those of you who were not able to attend town meeting, Matt Merrick did a great job of presenting the new lights for Spillane Field. It was, I think unanimously, approved by the, by town meeting attendees. So our high school football, soccer, and occasionally some other athletic events and graduation, I suppose, as well, will have the pleasure of some great lighting. I think he's going to try and get it in before the next baseball season, if not sooner. So that was a success. But there was nothing else on the town meeting warrant that, that applied to the schools, at least that I remember. Anything else that people want to bring before the committee? Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Any, anybody dissenting? Okay, we are adjourned. Kevin, hang in there for me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John Day.